In person is Jay Bemke, Dan Hanson. And online we have, give me a second here to bring it up. We have Shane Burkhardt, and Lee Tao, and Susan Feath attending virtually. Our first item on the agenda is approval of the reports from January 4th and January 19th planned commission meetings. What are your wishes?
Move to approve.
I have a motion by Bemke. Second by Dan Hanson. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Next item on the agenda is Plan 21-0036, Lampert Lee &amp; Associates, request for a certified survey map approval for the creation of two lots located at 4420 Ridgeview Lane, parcel ID 3414540. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you, Mayor. This request is pretty self-explanatory. It's a lot split from one lot to two lots on Ridgeview Lane. The lots are approximately 20,000 square feet apiece, a little bit over that, and staff have no objections to the request and would recommend approval.
I'll move.
We have a motion by Susan Feath. Second by Dan Hanson. We have a motion, a second, to approve the request. All in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? That motion carried. Item number three is Plan 21-0038, Department of Public Works, to request for a certified survey map approval for the creation and purchase of two outlots and the dedication of property as public right-of-way located at 2321 Jefferson Street, parcel ID 3400755. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you. This one is, this request is a little more detailed. As it's noted in the item, the Department of Public Works is looking to construct a cul-de-sac at the end of Jefferson Street. And as you can see from the map, they need to purchase some land and then dedicate some right-of-way in order to get the proper width for that cul-de-sac. So a survey has been drafted and presented to Plan Commission. In addition to the survey, again, is the dedication of right-of-way. You can see here the survey and the two outlots, which again, basically are the circle on the north and south side of the cul-de-sac. With that being said, it is an appropriate request with regards to the use of the land. Right now, there is no cul-de-sac. It basically is a driveway that vehicles enter onto on a private property, and so this would again be a proper dead-end essentially for the street, so staff would recommend approval.
Thank you. I thought you had a question. Any questions by the commissioners?
Does this cut the street out completely there? There's no continuation of the street planned for?
No, there is not. If you look on the map, the streets don't necessarily line up, and there's a railroad that separates what would be Jefferson Street from east to west.
That's correct. There's already a cul-de-sac on the other side, so this is just kind of finishing off this side.
Okay.
With that, this is Shane. I'll make a motion to approve the request.
Second.
We have a second by Bemke. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Does anybody oppose? That motion carries. We're on to item four, Plan 21-0032, Woodtrust Bank, to request for an architectural review to perform a facade improvements to the building at 181 Second Street South, parcel ID 3408123-3, which falls within the downtown design overlay district. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you. I first want to start off by saying that the applicant is in the audience here at City Hall and can certainly speak to this as well if I don't get all the details here in regards to the project. Ultimately, Woodtrust Bank again is looking to pursue a new facade for their downtown location, and the building falls within the downtown design overlay district, and there are a set of standards that need to be met within that district that Plan Commission reviews henceforth. The request is before you tonight. I've summarized a few of the details in a pretty detailed staff report, and I'll go through them quickly here. Ultimately, the existing facade or cladding on the building is failing. I believe some of it was in bad shape and falling off the building, creating a safety concern for residents on the public sidewalk below. And a portion of that sidewalk was closed for an extended period of time this past year, and so it's something that significantly needs to be addressed. And the bank has chosen to essentially put on a new facade, so remove the granite panels and put on some new panels that are synthetic or composite in nature, and also to install some windows, 36 windows in total. I also want to note of a typo in my staff report. I mentioned that the new panels proposed would stick out three feet. That is not the case. They are only sticking out an additional three inches from the existing granite facade. And again, the existing granite panels would be removed, and then the new proposed panels would be installed on top. Here's some historic photos of the building dating back quite a while prior to the additions. I think the existing granite panels today were put on in the 60s, I think 1963. And you can see that the contractor has removed some of the panels to see what the facade looks like on the rear, and certainly it's not in the greatest of shape, and I think it's fitting for another cladding material to take the place of these granite panels as they proposed. Here's some renderings they put together that are attached to the staff report as well. They're looking to incorporate a panel to create an aesthetic feature over the entrances, both on the south and the west facade here, and it's resembling wood, but it's ultimately a synthetic panel, but I think it adds a nice feature. And the existing washed or stone white brick will remain on the facility as well. Again, here are some elevations. I'll go through these quickly as they're part of the packet. In reviewing the standards, you know, we found again that what's proposed isn't necessarily, you know, meeting the historic character or nature of the original building. However, because it is not, very rare, little to no aesthetic or architectural significance exist from the original structure, we don't feel like we're losing any historic character if another cladding material is applied to the building, and therefore, we would recommend approval for that reason. Ultimately, this isn't necessarily a historic district, so we're not trying to restore the building. We're just ensuring that the standards within the zoning code are being met from a design standpoint, and that the overall design fits within the character of the downtown. And I feel as though the proposed materials will do just that. I think they're aesthetically appealing and certainly fitting and improve the aesthetics over the granite panels as well. So with that, we would recommend approval. I do want to note that the second condition outlined in the staff report, I would recommend removing. So the downtown design overlay district does not require tinted glass for first-floor windows. The primary reason, I believe, is to ensure that the storefront glass that you see at entrances isn't tinted, so we maintain that inviting feel with some of our storefronts in our downtown. And while the code prevents the tint, I feel as though that the windows in question here are not resembling the storefront windows. They're in fact raised above the elevation of the sidewalk, and so they're not necessarily inviting to the public to come in, they're, I believe, to offices or office space, and they also are on the third, I'm sorry, the south facade, which does experience quite a bit of sunlight. So I feel as though it is appropriate to allow for tint on those windows, given it does not necessarily meet the intent of that condition, and so I would recommend removing condition two out of three conditions when making the recommendation.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. Any, does commissioners have any questions? Do you have anything you'd like to add, sir, or did he cover it pretty well? Okay. Sounds good, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve then.
We have a motion by Bemke to approve.
Second.
Second by Susan Feath. Is there any additional questions or comments? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
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 Anybody opposed? Motion carried. Thank you. All right, we're on to number five, which is Plan 21-0027, Wisconsin Rapids School District, a request to consider a petition for direct annexation by unanimous approval of approximately 4.094 acres from the town of Grand Rapids, located at an unaddressed parcel on Grove Avenue, east of 16th Street. Town parcel ID is 0700640, and to temporarily zone the parcel Institutional District I-1. Mr. Kearns, and also, school superintendent's also online.
Thank you. Again, this is a unanimous request for annexation. Many of the plan commissioners are aware of the request from the school district to expand the recreational facilities, so this annexation goes along with that entire project for the four acres. It's important to note that the four acres does include half of the right-of-way on Grove Avenue. It also maintains a 10-foot wide connection with town property, which is something that the state looks at to make sure that you're not creating an island within the town. We do not yet have the state recommendation, but we're anticipating to get the state recommendation before the common council meeting, and state statute requires us to have that prior to final action on the item. We did get a preliminary response via email from Eric Schmidtke at the state, and he thinks that he would be supporting the recommendation based off of the information presented. In reviewing it further, the annexation does meet the comprehensive plan in terms of the future land use. You can see it's identified on the map outside of the city limits, but it's identified to develop as government or institutional type use. Furthermore, when looking at zoning, we feel as though a temporary use, given the proposed recreational activities of institutional use, would also match the existing institutional use for the high school, and would be separated similarly by Grove Avenue and undeveloped property to the east. So with that being said, given the unanimous nature of this annexation request, we would recommend approval, as well as the temporary zoning of I-1 Institutional District. And I lastly want to note that a permanent zoning classification will likely come back next month in March to permanently zone it I-1 Institutional District.
Thank you. Does anyone have any questions for Kyle, or the school superintendent's online also?
Yes, I have questions for Kyle.
Go ahead.
Are we going to lose Grove? Is this still proposed as a street for Grove coming in in the future?
So Grove will remain with the annexation. Only half of it now will be under the city's jurisdiction. So nothing necessarily will change with Grove Avenue immediately upon annexation. Does that answer your question?
How do I know that in the future?
Well, I can't predict the future, but I can tell you that, at least it's my knowledge, that the Department of Public Works isn't planning on expanding Grove Avenue in the near future. I can't tell you what's going to happen 10 or 15 years down the road, but initially upon annexation, they're not planning to expand. It's also important to note that we typically, when you annex a property, you typically annex to the right-of-way line, and so the town will still maintain ownership of half the right-of-way, and will maintain ownership of the other half. It's my understanding that we currently plow the road, and we use the eastern part of the road where it dead-ends to stockpile snow. So right now, we're doing a service to the town because the majority of that roadway, except for the western one-third, is in the city, but we're plowing the entirety of the roadway, which includes one or two residents on the roadway.
Okay.
Does that answer all your questions?
Yeah, that'll take care of it.
Okay. Hearing none.
Move to approve.
Sorry, I missed who that was.
Brian.
Oh, I'm sorry, thank you, sir. We have a motion by Mr. Bri, and I'll second that motion to approve. So we have a motion, a second, is there any further discussion? Hearing and seeing none, all in favor say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay, motion carried. Our next item is number six, Plan 20-102, Wisconsin Rapids Public School District, for site plan review and architectural review to expand the outdoor recreational facilities at 1801 16th Street South, parcel ID 3414751. Mr. Kearns.
Again, this involves the same property. Last month, the Plan Commission approved a conditional use for the expansion of the recreational facilities at the high school, but they did not feel comfortable with approving the site plan and architectural review, given the lack of details for the project. So the applicant has submitted renderings and details and some building schematics for the development, including more details regarding the parking lot expansion and a lighting plan, and you'll find that detailed review from a staff perspective in the staff report. I'll walk through them quickly now. Most of this you already know with regards to the project, as we've gone over it already, so I'll jump into the renderings. Here's ultimately what the facility will look like with a concession stand in the middle, surrounded by the fields, the two baseball and two softball fields, and the bleachers, and the dugouts. Again, here's the facility coming from the main walking path. As you get closer to the facility, from the outfield, and a picture of the dugouts. This is the overall site plan. You can see the level of detail that they've put into the parking lot, which was lacking previously, and I'll walk through some of those review items shortly. Here's a zoomed-in photo of the parking lot and the landscape plan as well. Again, all of these were included within the packet, and some elevations of the facility. Lastly, the lighting plan. With regards to the findings, the parking lot, upon staff's review, we feel as though it has good ingress egress. It maintains the existing driveway on Grove Avenue. It serves as a one-way, so the stalls are angled, and then they exit back out into the main drive aisle for the parking lot. I did not find a parking lot setback noted on the plan, so I would recommend that the required five-foot setback be included on an updated site plan. Furthermore, the landscaping points that were required, 500 total, were not met. There were only 482 points. Furthermore, they did not have any within the required street frontage area, which is identified as 10 feet from the public right-of-way. So I would request an updated landscaping plan be submitted to be reviewed by Community Development Department staff, identifying those additional points, those landscape points, and then placing some of the landscaping within that street frontage area. From an architectural standpoint, I feel as though the proposed buildings are, you know, relatively simple, but aesthetically appealing, constructed of wood with brick and metal panel facades. Ample doors and windows exist where appropriate, and the primary difference is that the dugouts, their primary construction will be of concrete block. I also like some of the added features, again, from an aesthetic standpoint, one of which is the large decorative sign pillar that's proposed as you enter the facility. I think that adds an aesthetic component and kind of sets the facility apart. And then lastly, the lighting plans that were submitted were appropriate as well, having 0.1-foot candles at the adjacent residential property line. So with that being said, we would recommend approval with the conditions outlined in the staff report and on the screen here, most of which I've gone over already.
Thank you, Kyle. Does anyone have any questions? For, I guess if you have anything for Kyle or the school superintendent, he's online. Mr. Raome, do you have any questions?
I don't.
Okay.
Move to approve, Bri.
Go ahead.
Second from Burkhardt.
I'm sorry, Tom, did you make a motion?
Yes, I did. Motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, and Mr. Burk-
Based on your committee.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Burkhardt, you seconded it?
Yeah.
Okay, thanks. So we have a motion, a second, to approve the site plan review and the architectural review for the proposed project. There's no further discussion or questions? All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carried. Thank you. Item seven is a public hearing and action on Plan 21-0039, Community Development Department, a request for the amendment to Chapter 11 zoning code of the city's municipal code to define truck stop and place it within the zoning district. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you. So there are two amendments here, both require the public hearings, which we can have after I do the introduction here. The first one is, let me back up. These are a result of a few requests recently that we've fielded, where we have uses that have been questioned that don't exist within the zoning code, and it's rather difficult for me to tie them to another existing use. So I feel as though it's appropriate then to define them within the zoning districts, or define them within the zoning code and place them within applicable zoning districts. The food one is, or the first one is a truck stop, and right now, the only place a truck stop is mentioned is under the definition of vehicle fuel station, where it states that it shall not include a truck stop. And then it leads you to believe, okay, well, where does truck stop fall? And it's nowhere else identified. So I've done that, I've defined it in the memo, I've also placed it as a conditional use within the B2 district, which is our primary commercial corridors, and then as a permitted use within the heavy industrial M1 and M2 districts. I think the difference there is that most of the industrial districts already have heavy truck traffic, you know, noise that comes with the truck traffic, loading, unloading, things of that nature. So I think as a permitted use, it's appropriate, whereas in the commercial district, you certainly still have that activity, and that's where you'll find your vehicle fuel stations. But I think it's appropriate to require that conditional use, given that a lot of our B2 commercial areas do border residential properties and other, you know, institutional type uses where a truck stop, dependent upon the hours of operation, could certainly impact those adjacent uses. So that's why I placed it as a conditional use within the B2 district. Here, it's a pretty standard definition, along with some supplemental standards that tailor to the use, and with that, again, I think it is appropriate to define it and place it where referenced.
Thank you. So we need to have a public hearing?
Yep.
And so, how's this going to relate to council meeting? So the public hearing is going to be tonight?
Yeah, so this is an ordinance amendment to the zoning code, so it's a little bit different than like a conditional use permit. We can hold the public hearing at Plan Commission.
Sounds good, thank you. So at, let's see, 4:28, we can open up the public hearing? I'll call for anybody who wishes to speak against the change, or the amendment to the zoning code? I'll call for a second time, if anybody wants to speak against the amendment to the code? And I guess lastly, I'll speak, or if somebody wishes to speak against the amendment to the zoning code? All right, hearing none, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the amendment to the Secondly, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the amendment? And lastly, does anybody wish to speak in favor to the amendment of the zoning code? Seeing and hearing none, we'll close the public hearing at 4:29. Commission, what are your wishes?
Move to approve.
We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Hanson, in favor of the request to change the amendment, or the amendment to the zoning code. Is there any further discussion? Seeing and hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
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 And anybody opposed, say nay. Motion carried. Number eight is public hearing and action on Plan 21-0040, Community Development Department, a request for an amendment to the Chapter 11 zoning code of the city's municipal code to define food pantry and place it within the zoning districts. Mr. Kearns.
Thank you. Again, same difficulty here with regards to food pantry, it's- It's not necessarily your generic retail type use and it's certainly not a grocery store use either. It can certainly garner some truck traffic at times. So we felt as though it was appropriate to define it and then place it also within districts. And we've identified that it's fitting within the B2, the B5, the M1, and I believe that's it. So again, as a permitted use within those three districts. And the definition is, again, fairly standard. I think the biggest difference here is, again, that, you know, a food pantry is typically not operating like a grocery store. While it has food, you know, it's making it available to the public during certain hours. It has deliveries quite frequently. And then there, you know, there are drop-offs and pickups and so forth. And I don't have huge concerns that'll be more detrimental than a grocery store or a similar type use within those districts. So I would recommend approval.
Thank you, Mr. Kearns. At 4:32, we can open a public hearing? Is there anybody who wishes to speak against the amendment to the zoning code to define food pantries? And secondly, is there anybody who wishes to speak against the amendment? And lastly, is there anybody who wishes to speak against the amendment? Going on, does anybody wish to speak in favor of the amendment to the zoning code? And secondly, does anybody wish to speak to the amendment? And lastly, is there anybody who wishes to speak to the amendment of the zoning code? Seeing and hearing none, we can close the public hearing at 4:33. And what are your wishes?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Hanson. So we have a motion and a second to approve the request. Is there any further discussion or questions? Seeing and hearing?
This does not affect the current swap's location?
Does it? Kyle, this doesn't affect the current existing location?
Yeah, I'm not sure what they're zoned. It's something I'd have to look up. But if, for example, they were zoned, let's say residential, they would still be allowed to operate. They would just be, you know, grandfathered use essentially. So it shouldn't negatively impact them.
Does commissioners have any other questions? Seeing and hearing none? So all those in favor of the request, signify by saying aye? Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? All right, thank you very much. That motion carried. That takes us to item number nine, adjournment. I have a motion by Bemke, seconded by Hanson. I wanted to thank everybody for their time this evening. With that, we have a motion and a second to adjourn. All in favor, say aye. Aye?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Seeing none, motion carried. Thank you very much. Have a good night.